Welcome, welcome everybody to the Town Hall Meeting number forty-nine. It's May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. And today we're joined by Fly, Tavvo, Eric, Judith, Canici, Pauline, Roger, Slade, Stephen and Fanny. Thanks all for joining. In light of keeping things short and concise, we'll have the same structure as last week, where we'll try to cover the workgroup updates a little bit short and yeah, try to stick in two, maximum three minutes each. And well, yeah, let's dive in. The first one to put a little reminder of what we're even doing here for those joining in for the first time or watching this on YouTube and have no clue what we're about. Yeah, most of the program aims to facilitate community members who want to learn about the ecosystem and help spreading the word or contributing to its goals. The goal being decentralized AGI and realizing that we do this by all kinds of self-organizing workgroups. And yeah, in the meantime, you also get to hang with good people and have some fun. So if you're interested, do join us on Discord. And the Getting Started channel there will make sure you know what to do on Getting Started. I wanted to put a quick mention for coming Thursdays at nineteen UTC. There's going to be a deep funding community governance call. Basically, there's five missions right now on the Sway platform where you can submit suggestions on how to improve deep funding for round two, three rather. And these missions are open, I believe, till June first, so for another week. And coming Thursday, we'll discuss the current proposals on there. So do hop on Zoom if you're interested in that. And that brings us to an overview of the workgroups and what has happened in the last week and what's coming for the coming week. Well, they're organized by time in the week and that makes us start with the Process Guild, which takes place right after this Town Hall Meeting at nineteen UTC. Tavvo, can I ask you to give a little updates on what's going on?
Well, in Process Guild, we are managing tasks, looking at high level what different workgroups and guilds are doing. And then basically creating like a requirement list and like figuring out what needs to be done or completed in order to move this task along or lose it. So we keep at it and at the meantime, I will be working on organizing and making that that kind of agenda through the weeks and through the months as we do this task management more efficient and fun experience to do together.
Awesome. That has to be the most concise version so far. Nice. On the Archive Workgroup, if it's okay, I would like to skip that for now because that will have its own dedicated, not so super concise section after the workgroup updates. Let's check in on the participants list. We have both Vanessa and Stephen here. Cool. Yeah, so that won't be as time pressured, so no worries there. That brings us on to the next on the list, which is the Process Modeling Workshop, which is, I didn't include the day, but it's tomorrow on Wednesday at fifteen UTC. And Tavvo, that does bring me back to you. I think you initiated this session.
Yeah, so in the first session, we basically did some planning and making sure we are on the same page of what we are doing, we are doing. So a bunch of decisions were made, like splitting workshop into four-week cadence, and this will be planning what we did. Next, tomorrow are basically in tomorrow will be drafting and we also invite all ambassadors to join that one because we are now working on the first area, which will be the ambassador onboarding process mapping. So having like a high-level view of all the nuances and the things we've already been done and collecting the basically the information, how it's been done so far, or what has been delivered. So that will be an important kind of information collective session. And then we have two weeks after that to refine and then most likely in Process Guild we share it and then we also, yeah. Actually, we are sharing and then refining. And yeah, technically cool and able to not use workgroup time, but have like different places where we share it. Yeah, that's the main idea. Oh, and actually fun thing about that because Treasury Guild is also coming up, new feature to the Treasury Guild that you can have any row in your workgroup or in guild. And based on that, a custom made like rewarding the algorithm. So for example, everybody who participates in Process Modeling Workgroup and participates that long enough that we call you a facilitator, you will automatically get ten dollars as a standard rate for participating in any Process Guild meeting or Process Modeling Workgroup. And that's automatically by Treasury Guild, just recognizing the participation task. So we don't have to do double, double tasking if you want to recognize this. Yeah, so updates.
Yeah, good stuff, good stuff. All right, that brings us to the Incubation Workshop.
Yeah, I can take it up.
Yes?
Yeah, Incubation Workgroup map last week on Wednesday, the seventeenth. Incubation Workgroup is a place to incubate ideas, to discuss an open source wisdom and knowledge from our community, to develop a playground where we can, yeah, we can move forward with ideas and kind of align ourselves on some level. Last week, we had an open discussion based around what people perceived as the point or the purpose of the ambassador program. It's been coming up in the last few weeks, especially with the formation of Sincom down. We, the goal was basically to provide a setting for questions, opinions and feedback. And we had, yeah, an open conversation on where everyone sees the ambassador program as and becoming. There were some great reflections that I won't go into now, but they are on the meeting summaries, which I will send a link to. Welcome to come this Wednesday. It's the first half of two-hour sloth. Second is Strategy by Hado.
Very smooth bridge there. Hado?
Hi.
So you're joining? I'm not sure if you're
I joined. Today is our last day in Costa Rica, our last full day, so we had to go out and get t-shirts and hats for the strategy guild tries to zoom up from the grassroots level of incubation to a ten-thousand-foot view. And it spawned many, many different items that are being worked on. Last week was the second part of a attempt at best practices on how to run a meeting in this virtual world. It, in my opinion, was not very successful. It was not fully vetted out and people wanted to talk about other items that were more pressing. So unless there's a demand, I think we're going to walk away for the best practices of a meeting in the virtual world. For right now, there is a document out there. It has garnered no comments, so another reason I believe it's not a demanding or pressing item for the community. And this week, tomorrow, we're going to pivot towards, we started the last spinoff with governance and now we're going to look at ethics, try to work towards a code of ethics for ambassadors. And that will be the topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff. Let's see, that brings us to the Treasury Guild, which was touched on shortly already.
Yeah, our Treasury Guild meetings themselves had a little bit more discussionary, so not development there. If we don't call stake pool, operation activities and incubating that workgroup a development. And with this, there are new additions to the Google Calendar, Ambassador Google Calendar. So in June twenty-ninth, there are two stake pool workgroups for two different time zones. One is eleven UTC AM and another one is, oh, actually, I used game to the time zone, so I have to re-calculate eight UTC and what? At seventeen UTC. Other than that, another main discussion went into figuring out our product licenses and the way we use it and organizing a bit of internal activities here that we can smoothly figure out what tools we can use and what can be leveraged to speed our efforts and not have to bear costs all our own. And final aha moment was that because of a new treasury rule, that all the people who participate and contribute to things that only reward Timbald tokens, we thought we're gonna now for four weeks, just aggregate the entire list and then put it into single pointy transaction. But what happened last week was that we had to do two transactions because we had too many contributions. So if this situation happens again, we're going to reduce the aggregation by into three weeks and so that we always, because technically it doesn't matter to be two transaction at the end of month or two, two transaction like one every few minutes. But the difference is that then at least on chain, we have like this lively, lively. So I'd rather move towards to just repeatedly instead of aggregating and just doing transactions at the end. So yeah, a little, we are catching the limit of Cardano protocol and that is a great thing. So we need to refresh our ways and methods.
Yeah, good stuff. Pushing it to the limits is always good. Then next on the list would be the AI Sandbox Session on Thursday at eighteen UTC.
Yeah, we have an AI Sandbox this Thursday, eighteen UTC. It's a bit different time from two weeks ago. There wasn't an AI Sandbox last week. However, it is happening this week and we welcome you all to come along. It's a session to get into LLMs using GPT and other tools for kind of grassroots tasks and uses. It's open to everyone, any level. Please come play, see that.
Good stuff. And while it looks like we're at the end of the list, we're actually expanding and moving on to two sheets for the workgroups. So there's more to explore. Next on the list would be a session on website ideation and a bit of hangouts. This was initiated by Alex. Let me quickly check the attendance. I don't think he's here right now.
I think it's him and Cran kind of put this. It's at ten, ten PM UTC, actually. And yeah, it's just a little session to go through very casually some ideas which were talked about by a few people in different meetings, seeing if we can make something out of those ideas and kind of develop more of a hangout scenario, these water cooler scenarios, as you'd call them, which are, yeah, really, really essential for innovation. Yeah, I think there's some of this kind of sessions. Come chill and not yet.
Sounds like you're underwater a little bit to me. Maybe it's on my side, but the last sentence I could not catch.
Aha, whoops. Sorry about that. Nice. Well, I can't remember the last sentence I said, but yeah, come, come hang. Yeah.
That's it, absolutely. All right, next on the list would be the Marketing Guild, where I do see an error in the slides. It shifted to a bi-weekly meeting. And I copied last week's slide and it now says next week, but it is actually this week at fifteen UTC. There's an ongoing threat in the Marketing Guild Discord channel, asking about ideation on what exactly do we as a program want the Marketing Guild to be. So please, if you have ideas on that, do contribute on that Discord channel. I think for now, let's move on to the Writers' Workgroup, which is also at Friday at fourteen UTC. I see we have Canici in the house.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for that, Peter. So this, last week, we actually had two meetings for the Writers' Workgroup. We had an impromptu meeting on Thursday. That was at fifteen UTC to discuss a few of the things on the D-Work Board and to also to tackle a couple of issues in the workgroup and to get a bit of overview on each person's work perspective and all for writing. And then we envisioned a workflow, which we further went to discuss on Friday at the original time. And we covered that, we covered the computer protocol review and we did a group review on that, just minimal review. And we also opened the two submissions for the Sophia Dal article. The computer protocol article is live on our media page, went out yesterday. And the Sophia Dal article is ready and will be going out tomorrow. Also, we also outlined the workflow I created on a narrow board. We tried to discuss, see ideas and how to like envision and move forward with that workflow. I can paste the URL link later, just to show right now. And I think those are the main highlights from our workgroup. We tried to get the time, couple of the time for the writers' workgroup for the workflow and best practices for moving forward with content creation and publication. We'll be doing more discussions on this workflow as trying to build out roles and responsibilities in the workgroup and understand how to give feedback and updates. So yeah, those are the main highlights from the work, from the meeting. And all this mostly stems from inefficiency in our current workflow and that's majorly it. We'll be doing more of the review on the workflow and the narrow board for extensive this week. More articles will follow. That's it.
Thank you. And I see I put the Friday workgroups backwards in time. Yeah, thanks a lot, Canici. So then we'll go one hour before that to the Video Workgroup at thirteen UTC. Roger, would you provide us a little update on that?
Yeah, for sure. So as an introduction, I mean, the Video Workgroup is a workgroup that basically makes videos and that goes to describe what the Singularity Net project and all its subsidiaries are all about. That's kind of our main mission. And yeah, so last week, we didn't formally have a meeting. There was a meeting, but I wasn't there because of some emergency that happened. But there was a meeting that was kind of facilitated by Tommy and I would like to thank him for that. But we did have a lot of votes for some videos that were made. So we started having like a constant flow of videos being made, which is a really positive thing. We don't have a shortage of basically content to publish, which is a great thing. But we do encourage anyone who wants to join us. There is, there is a couple of tasks that are already public if you would like to basically attempt any of them. If you get one of your tasks accepted, then you're automatically a member of the workgroup. Something, well, yeah, something that is very exciting that is coming and which is basically NFT-based voting. So our members will have some NFTs from the workgroup and these are going to be used to basically make votes from now on on projects. So yeah, this is a cool thing that is coming. And this is about the Video Workgroup. Again, you're welcome to our meetings if you want to join this Friday. I would like to also announce that we're, we're gonna have a workshop on the SIP sixteen ninety-four and that's gonna be in the next two weeks. We don't have a fixed date yet, but stay tuned on our social media, Twitter, Instagram, whatever. It's gonna, it's gonna be basically published all over and we really look forward to have you in there and basically exchange ideas and all this. And thank you.
Thanks a lot for that. And I do think we can, if you're up for it, we can also give you some Town Hall time, like five to 10 minutes to elaborate a little bit on that session once it's scheduled.
Yeah, that would be cool.
Thanks a lot. That does bring us to Monday, where we have the Educational Workgroup at nineteen UTC. And the Fridays, are you, you are in the house?
I am in the house or hotel, depending on how you look at it. This week at Education, we actually went over the meeting Rojo was just talking about, which is about the Governance Action SIP sixteen ninety-four, aka Voltaire, that Cardano has recently been discussing and is about to release. Rojo and I have been looking at the workshop guide and looking to plan out when we're gonna hold it. As he said, there's not a solid date, but I think we're looking at holding it during the education time slot, which is seventeen UTC every Monday. Please join, come on in. This is where all things education-wise and Singularity Net should be coming out, or hopefully will start coming out of. So come join.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for that. And then the last on the list would be the Broadcast Ideation Workgroup, which shifted to a bi-weekly one by now. It's not entirely clear.
Yeah, that's true.
So coming Monday, it will take place at twenty, correct, Fly?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. Yeah. If anyone would like to, there's a little challenge I put out. So challenge is to make a plan for an idea, a broadcasting project that you would want to create with a budget of a million dollars. And then through, we'll go through ideas next week and see if we can have some fun trying to pull some of these crazy ideas into reality. Yeah, so welcome anyone who wants to take part. Yeah, should be fun.
I'm sure it will be. Yeah, it's awesome.
In case anyone didn't get it, the million-dollar part was a joke. Don't get too excited.
I'm saying dream big, plan it like it's a million dollars. And then we see, then turn up to the meeting. Nice.
Yeah, perfect. All right, and a short, quick reminder before moving to the Archive Workgroup, that there's a public calendar, which you can add to your own Google Calendar, so you don't have to miss any of all these meetings. Let me stop screen sharing for a second because I don't have a slide on this. I think Vanessa, if you're ready, yeah, please walk us through a little bit on the Archive Workgroup.
I will, yeah. Hi, everybody. Thanks, Peter. So yeah, this is a new workgroup. Some of you will have been aware of it kind of bubbling up for a while. And it's all about collecting and preserving a record of the things we do and the meetings that we have and taking ownership of our, our history as a community, I guess. So to update people on where we're at with it, the core archive team, that's me, Stephen, Andre and Miro, had a meeting last week and firmed up some details around the distribution of work, which I'll fill you in on so you know what we're up to. Stephen's gonna be focusing on documenting the pretty massive backlog of meetings going back about a year. And the rest of us will be focusing on archiving meetings from here on in, which includes, as we've just seen, about twelve meetings a week, give or take. And we'll also be working with the Singularity Net Governance Gitbook and the Ambassador's Gitbook and trying to keep those in shape as well. So as of next week, I'm gonna be putting some energy into collaborating, hopefully with the different workgroups, if you'll have me, particularly to develop some guidelines on what information we absolutely need from a workgroup in order to archive something meaningfully. And then developing workflows that suit everybody so that it all goes smoothly and we can easily see what we've got and what we haven't got. And then also looking at how you each want to do your documentation and how we can adapt to you to make sure that we capture what you want us to capture. And then Andre especially will be looking at how we might use large language models in the Archives work. And one cool angle on this is what we're collecting now at this early stage is basically is a record. In order to make it become fully an archive rather than a record, we need to think about core archival processes, things like cataloging, creating finding aids, taxonomies, all the things that make the material more discoverable. And we think LLMs could be useful there. And there's a couple of other possible avenues too that Andre is going to be looking at. So it's all quite exciting. So that's the background to what we're doing and just to fill people in on how they can get involved. Our first open meeting will be tomorrow at thirteen hundred UTC for two hours and it's on the calendar with the Zoom link. And they're gonna be fortnightly, so it'll be every two weeks. So I'd really encourage anyone who's interested in this question of archiving and recordkeeping, how we as a community decide what to keep and what we want our history to be, to come along and join us. So if you're interested in that, you'll find it interesting, but also if you want to improve your GitHub skills, you might enjoy it too, since in our meetings, we're gonna be working out of a GitHub Issues Board. It works pretty similar to a Kanban, so it's quite an accessible way to get a bit more familiar with GitHub if you want to. Our meetings are gonna be quite practical. We'll start by running through the live issues on the board, updating them where we can and inviting insights from anyone who's in the meeting. And then in the second half, we will practically work on some archiving task or other live so that people can learn how it's done and start to get familiar with the archival process and what we're doing. Now, to take a full part in the meeting, you'll need a GitHub account. So if you've got any difficulty setting one up, we can help. Just send us a message in the Archives Workgroup channel in Discord or send us a DM. I'll put mine and Stephen's Discord handles in the chat in a second. So if you've got, if you're interested, but you don't use GitHub, then please do. If you already have an account and you're part of the SNET GitHub organization, you should have at least editor and probably creator rights on the GitHub board for the Archives already. So that's where we are with the Archives group and that's how to find me or Stephen. So that's where we are with the Archives group and that's how to find me or Stephen. And yeah, there was one other thing that I just wanted to mention while I'm here. I mentioned already that we'll be working on archiving the governance work group. So in that context, there was a meeting of that work group earlier today about how to best move forward with the governance framework document that Felix started, which I'm sure a lot of you are aware of. And we were just talking about this and I'll just put a link to it in the chat, just in case people don't know which one I mean. So tomorrow morning, I'll be posting a doc in the Ambassador's Discord, which will be an attempt to collate some of the issues that have emerged from the comments on that document. And I'll ask people to weigh in with anything I might have missed and to help think about what order to address them in and how to progress that. So we can get something archival into the record about it. Right. It's about all I've got to say and thank you so much for the time.
Thanks a lot for that. Good stuff. Is there any questions in the room perhaps?
I'm actually personally interested in, let's say, improving my Git skills. So if you can go through just a little bit, what's going to be included in, what to call it, I guess, a training?
I mean, it's more learning by doing to be honest, but let me just, let me just put a link in the chat to the problems board that we'll be using. So I don't, I don't know, Rojo, do you have a GitHub account already and GitHub access to Singularity Net's organization?
I have a GitHub account, but I do not have access.
Okay. So we'll have to sort that out for you and we can probably do that in the meeting probably. But if you can follow that link, you should be able to see. Can I screen share? I've got a very ropey connection, so I'm a little bit worried about doing that. So yeah, go on. Yeah, please.
Yeah. Yeah, Roger. It's going to be learning by doing. I think we've already got an invite from you. The, I don't want to take over the town hall, so just very briefly, we will, I'm not sure if you can see my screen. Yeah, this is what a GitHub board looks like. There's an overview, table view, there's a roadmap view and there's a Kanban view. We're kind of going to stay with the overview and then these will contain issues like to do progress. So we'll expand on this and go through each one, reviewing like in a standup. So go through progress, like this is a record of a meeting. Where the GitHub membership comes in is the assignees here. So if you want to participate in any of these tasks, you'll need an account so we can assign you work. So that's, I won't go into any more detail than that, but we, that's just scratching the absolute surface. But so basically we will take you through the use of GitHub project management tools. But then how far we go, well, the sky's the limit really. So it depends on how far you want to go. Okay.
That's all.
Anybody else? More questions on the topic of the archive work group?
Sounds great. Nice one.
All right. Good stuff. Just an additional reminder. So the work group session tomorrow will take place at 13 UTC. And it's also on the calendar, as are all the sessions. All right. That kind of brings us to the, well, the open portion of the tunnel, where there's space for basically any topic we feel like discussing. If there are topics we should be discussing, we don't have to fill the hour necessarily, but if anybody has some topics to discuss, please be free.
I have no idea that perhaps we should have one meeting, perhaps the Ambassador Town Hall on Discord, because I noticed that there is a kind of drop in engagement if, when we go on to Zoom and I think it may be a bit too much for people to join. And I was wondering what you guys think about moving just the Ambassador Town Hall back to Discord.
But why we moved from there was that we reached the limit for too many weeks. Like when people see us, it's easier to join and then nobody can join.
Well, that's only if we're doing video now.
Oh, right.
We can, we can share a screen and have more than 25 as well now. Or is it? Yeah, I'm not sure if it's, if it's video or sharing.
You can share, yeah. And then the next category is 50 people and then nobody can join.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just an idea, you know? Curious your guys' thoughts.
I wonder, actually Fly has a really good point because there is a decrease, especially for newcomers that might not be familiar with the program. They might not you know, go through that next step of joining the Zoom. I wonder if, in case we reach the limit, in case we can broadcast it on YouTube directly, would that be a possibility to have a town hall and then broadcast it simultaneously? If we reach the limit, then you can still kind of watch it from YouTube or something like that.
You could actually do it from Zoom with a button click too, if you set that link up. And another thing is I just realized we do do this introductory sessions too before downhill. And I see people very disturbed. So that's a kind of already existed onboarding version.
That's a good point. I noticed they didn't come in here. Still needs a little bit more boarding, I guess.
It's a learning curve.
Yeah, nice.
Well, it makes me wonder if in light of experimentation, what the limits are on Telegram, because that also has video chat options. And there's, well, quite a, yeah, quite a big portion of our community is also on Telegram. So.
That's very true.
Could be something to experiment with as well.
I mean.
Not the tunnel, but I don't know. Say hi to the Telegram folks session or something like that.
Let me ask you, I'm not as technologically advanced as many of you, you all know that. But could you hold a multi-sensory type meeting where we have a Telegram, a Twitter, a Discord and a Zoom at the same time? And let people use their entrance methods and I mean, we're just beginning to get to archiving and we have the Read AI. So that'll be taking the notes and, you know, hopefully archiving everything going in into the meeting. But if we could have a simultaneous meeting, if it's possible, how would that work?
I think there's definitely tricks for that, like stuff like Restream is a platform which can facilitate pushing the content to multiple outlets. However, it won't be, it's going to be tricky to set it up in such a way that it also feeds back, that somebody on Telegram video could interact with somebody on Discord video, let's say. I'm not an expert on that, but yeah, would be very interesting to look into, just maximizing the output in that way. Yeah, I'll have to look into that, what exactly can be done. But I think platforms like Restream, you can simply send it to any existing platform.
Stuff like that is more like a presentation rather than a meeting and an interaction, isn't it? So maybe what we could do is have the sort of presentation part of the meeting, like where you've announced all the workgroups and all that, done like that. And then if we had a really nice chunky question for people to get into discussing, they could all discuss on their own platforms and then try and feed back somehow.
A bit like cross-platform breakout rooms.
Yeah, kind of. Yeah.
Hmm. It's kind of a good idea.
I'll have to look into it a little bit to see what's exactly possible. But regardless, I do think even if it somehow would be too, too, well, too difficult or whatever, experimenting a little with also being present on other platforms, I think that would be great regardless.
Yeah, I wonder what happens if there is a Twitter space from Singularity Net announced and then we just are there. Like because it's like very easy to just click and join from there, I assume.
Well, for Twitter space, we do have it. I think coming Thursday, there's one on Kojito Protocol, AMA session with Ben and Flores and also more people from Kojito team. But that will be on YouTube Live and then also, I don't know the proper terms, but I'll put it on Twitter space. So yeah, there's definitely options for linking stuff. But then to get people to speak on Twitter, feeding back into the YouTube Live, I'm not too sure if that's if that's how it works. So well, related to that, if anybody here has experience with this type of stuff, do reach out. Yeah, let's try to see what we can do.
Sounds like Kojito team have experience with that. If they're doing that on Thursday, perhaps we could like borrow their plans, use their techniques. Could you reach out?
Honestly, I think it's simply taking the audio from YouTube Live and pushing that to Twitter, but yeah, I'll ask. All right. Any other topics or questions or thoughts? And if not, we might have a premiere for this year and actually finish not even on time, but early. Does look like it. Great stuff. Then yeah, in 10 minutes from now, the Process Guild meeting will start on Zoom. Hope to see you there. And thanks all for your time.